Act like this is not South Africa. Ramo South Africa. Fuck, this is South Africa.
This is South Africa. Yeah? Things here and here.
We're saying thank you Jesus. Thank you my... We are saying thank you Jesus. Good morning y'all. Kennedy Croft is here in your home. We shall be here in your house. We are saying thank you Jesus. Today is, um... What is it? Today is morning. I'm sorry. Hi guys, my name is Oji. Back in the cut in this... And I'm definitely back in the cut. What is up guys, my name is Oji. And I'm definitely back in the cut. As you can see. Back like I never left. Back like I never, you know what I'm saying? Back like I never went through something. Yeah, why? Because I still believe in God. Wah wah wah! It's the 25th of February today. It's 7:42. I have a class at 8. I'm about to leave now. I just forgot to get dressed. I'm really sorry for this problem. So... This is my outfit for the day. I look so adorable. Like, I'm trying to... I'm trying to make you see me. Like I'm trying to make you see me. Okay? So this is, yeah, this is my face. My face is getting better. Like, I don't know. No one will notice. Does it really matter? Not really. But this is my outfit. Sheen. I haven't worn shoes yet. So that's... That's also a day. But... Uyiko okebele. Jehova. Mati Jehova. Jehova. Um Kalishii. I wanna smell sweet. I wanna smell sweet today. I'm wearing my Berries Weekend. Right? Ah! And I'm also wearing Violet Sapphire. Which is fruity. This is fruity, that is sweet. I love, you see? I love it. And I remember when somebody was making a review. Because I like watching reviews, study perfume now. And somebody was like, "This is not nice. It doesn't smell good." I'm like, "Babe, you say it's nice." And it doesn't have wood. Like, Monomilia would have like wood on, but it doesn't have wood. This Violet Sapphire and Berries Weekend. Don't sleep on it. I'm giving you a plug. Don't, don't sleep on it. Very sweet. Very, very sweet. Very sweet. And the other one is also this one. It's very subtle. I don't know if it's sweet. This is the Versace Woman. Hmm. I like it, very subtle. On a subtle day. On a subtle day. But my perfumes are running out. Can you imagine that? That time for no... Tengama body spray. But anyhow, guys. That's it. I'll see you in the next one, the general vlog. Do you think? Hmm. Kizzi's awake. Good morning, guys. Um, this is, today is Wednesday. So literally it's 6th of Feb. And it's 14:04... Oh, 4:14 for me. Quarter past 4 in the morning. Like, the devil likes this thing, innit? I don't know, well, not really. Like, I don't know. Like, yeah. Can you imagine? Like, I don't know what's happening. But I was waking up at like 3:00 or so. 3:50, 3:30. It's bull. It's happening. I think at 2:00, I started hearing weird sounds in my room. Sound like it's like, what the hell is going on? You hear it? Around... What sound is that? And they're 30 minutes apart, right? Think around 2:00. Oh, so I heard the first sound. And I just opened my one eye. I'm like, "What the hell? What really must happen?" Right, and... What happened? Oh, yeah. And then around, maybe 20 minutes or 30 minutes later. I had another sound. And I... That time I put last big eyes and... You have to wait. When there's a rat in the house. I don't know if you grew up in the suburbs, in the village, or in the luxury. But there, there's bound to be some, someone there. I'm like, "Ngatile roto lena ngatiamba in my rooms." Line being there, plastic, so is my plastic. Right? I placed it next to the fridge. So I'm just like, "Hmm." Plastic yala e swakiri viala. You know? And I just, the second time, I didn't even open my eyes. I was just like, "You know what, babe? I'm sleeping, I don't have time for this one." Ah! Shake me, wake me up. Do something crazy. Swabana I can wake up. Good morning, guys. It's late, third day. Um, just finished showering. I have class now, or rather in a few minutes. Um, I'm wait... Like, so I went back. I did some work, right? I still have more talks here. I did some work for like an hour, because I woke up at 3, right? So from 4:00 to like half past 5:00, I worked. Um, catching up on some stuff and so on and so forth. You know? But I have this thing of just saying, "Thank you Jesus." For like the smallest of things. Maybe like I'm looking for a cloth and I eventually just see it out of nowhere. Be like, "Thank you, Jesus." Oof! Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Um, but I'm back. I have like an hour break from classes before I have tax and accounting. Um, I wanted to come back and drink coffee. Because earlier today, I was waking up quite early. And I couldn't go back to sleep. And when I went back to sleep, because I went back to sleep around about half past 5:00. Um... Because I woke up at, um, at 3:00. I studied from 4:00 to half past 5:00. And, yeah, from, from, from half past 5:00 to... What is this time? I slept until half past 6:00. Alright? I slept until half past 6:00. My shower. Went to school. I didn't, I just came back to just drink some coffee. And, um, not just drink coffee. Change my jeans. Because they're also very, very tight. Like, I really can't move. But yeah. Um... What about it? I'm just gonna edit this week's vlog. I thought that I was not gonna post any vlog this week because of like my mental state. But honestly speaking, I feel way better. My week has been going so good. Um... That, not that things are going good. Can I be very realistic and honest? Nothing is going well. Things are falling apart. There's just so many things that are happening. But I feel so good. I feel at peace. You know why? Because I prayed about it. I'm like, "God, Jesus, please help me." That's what I said. I'm like, "I cannot do this by myself." And I started feeling better, literally on Monday. Sunday, everything fell apart. I found out some crazy stuff. Personally and family-wise. You know what I'm saying? And I was a bit scared, but you know what I'm saying? But many people, it won't be creepy. For me, it's quite creepy because I kinda have history on such a thing. And like, I can't be settled when I know what could happen. She gets. And this is South Africa. This is South Africa. Can we not? Let me just make my hair look good. Can we not act like this is not South Africa? Ramo South Africa. Fuck, this is South Africa.
This is South Africa. Yeah? Things here and here. There's a lot of things that happen. The highest ranking HIV. And rape cases and kidnappings. You understand? There is a lot of things that are going on here in South Africa. So that's why I'm so unsettled by what just happened in my life. Just like a... I was just a... You know? And, you know, it was, it's just crazy that people don't take it as serious as I'm taking it. But I know I'm in South Africa. And I got a pass. That involves all of this. You know what I'm saying? And I don't wanna, I don't wanna brush it up. Brap, 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 brap. No, no, no. Better safe than never. Prevention is better than cure. Rather nip it in the bud. Before, you know, you're in another country. You're in, um, Mexico. You know, on some cocainea. And you are, you are selling your ashawu there by the, you understand? I don't want in your dad's. God forbid. God forbid, could never be me. I, I, in the name of Jesus. You understand? Yeah, that's, that's the gist I'm gonna give you. Bless the Lord that... I kinda had an experience like this when I was younger. And my mom was like, "If you dare..." And when I grew older, I kinda got the concept, like, "Ay, if I dare, this could wa..." This is what could happen. But my birthday is around the corner. Am I excited? No. I really don't get it. But, um... My birthday is around the corner. So, yeah. That's all I gotta say, that my birthday is around the corner. Um... I'm a bit excited. Um... I had a weird dream today. ADHD is kicking in. But anyways, like I had a weird dream today. Like, it was so weird. It had like so many demons in it. Like, "They're trying to kill me." I'm sorry. Um, if you knew, yeah? Okay. Like, you don't know me personally, but I love at things that seem serious. Because first of all, why are you doing so damn serious? Like, ah! Somebody is like, "Why are you laughing that somebody is killing in your dreams?" I'm like, "First of all, why are they killing me?" Ah, I do do them. Give me the thing. I don't wanna pull a... Oh my gosh! Um... On that Sunday, I got ambushed at prayer meeting that I had to lead it. And it was, I think, low-key, it was a way for the Lord to kind of realign me again. You understand? For the Lord to help me realign and be fine. You understand? And the way the Holy Spirit was just speaking through me. Um, and giving me, I feel like it was more so for me than for anyone else. And after that prayer, I felt so good. I felt so good. I felt so good. Tuesday, I felt good. Wednesday, I feel good. You know? So... Even if, she gets. Even if today I woke up early. I woke up quite early. I woke up at 3:00. It was nightmares. It was things in my room. I, I'm good. Truly and honestly, okay? This whole day, um, I told, just somebody said something and I realized, I'm really not okay. You know? And I'm not invalidating that the peace that God gave me. It's just that I allowed myself to, to be triggered by certain things, you know? And I'm just... Guess who's back? Like, they never just had a breakdown. You know, sometimes the Lord works in mysterious ways. Like, to any other person, it's gonna seem like, um, "First of all, ma'am, like, are you psychotic?" I, I don't know, but like, I feel better. I'm not gonna lie to you. The enemy was winning. Because, like, yeah, look at the situation. I'm just like, I trust in the Lord. I trust in the Lord and I'm just, in my heart, internally, I'm just screaming, I'm crying. You know? And then I just get a call from somebody very unexpected for that matter. I'm like, "Ah, who's that?" You know? And... That's how I know that God works in mysterious ways. Because he heard my cry. He heard it. When I said it out loud, he heard it. And so welcome back to... Oji's YouTube channel!
And I stand up, but I'm a safe. Cause I'm moving out when I'm covered in gray. When's the spring and fall? It's on you I call. You get me through it all. You're the only one who knows how many times I've... Couldn't get my mind right, oh. Drowning in my tears at night. Fought it by the limelight, ooh. You are the way, the truth, the life I seek, I find. So glad I finally realized I've got a lifeline. God, you are the lifeline. God, you are the lifeline. I'm so sun over, not like to hope for. I find you see, never leave me. Remember times you were my only friend. Now it's me, there is no him. And I'm forever your baby. I'll be forever your baby. There ain't no ifs, ands, or maybes. You are, you are, you are. You are the way, the truth, the life I seek, I find. So glad I finally realized I've got a lifeline. God, you are the lifeline. God, you are the lifeline. God, you are... God, you are the lifeline. Yeah, I walk through the valley of the shadow of death. I will fear no evil, for thou art with me. No more broken hearts, no more. No more broken. No more broken. No more broken hearts. Yeah. Shawty giving Esther, but she fed up. Searching for a king to hold you down. But this time you've been waiting your turn. They can never think what's yours. It's already written, baby, girl, no trail. You already know what it is. Don't rush, just be still. Gotta give it to you when it fits. Sipping to your will and just ride. Love yourself in the meantime. Never feed into the lies. He know your heart desire. Shawty giving Esther, but she fed up. Yeah, yeah. Shawty giving Esther. Shawty giving Esther. Shawty giving Esther, but she fed up. Searching for a king to hold you down. But this time you've been waiting your turn. They can never think what's yours. It's already written, baby, girl, no trail. You already know what it is. Don't rush, just be still. Gotta give it to you when it fits. Shawty giving Esther. Don't you let them damn days fester. Don't you let your friends pre-press you. Miss their time, tell them bless up. Cause when it's yours, flood gates from heaven. I know, telling you it's coming. It's like preaching to the reverend. But somebody had to tell you. Sit back and let it settle. God pulling strings like your pedal. Don't put your faith in no fellow. They poking at you with they nose when they tell you. It ain't in your cards, but God aligning the stars. You deserve a lot, like a line of cars. Everything you want already yours. If you believe it, that's the hardest part of receiving. It's your season, only if you mean it. Shawty giving Esther, but she fed up. Searching for a king to hold you down. But this time you've been waiting your turn. They can never think what's yours. It's already written, baby, girl, no trail. You already know what it is. Don't rush, just be still. Gotta give it to you when it fits. Your love is intimate.
I really am tired. I was at the library, um, to catch up on some stuff. I finally got registered for, um... Yeah, I finally completed my registration. Um, there's just like so many... Yeah. I'm really tired. I think, la la la. And the most part is that I drank an energy drink and I'm still tired. What is up, guys? Late. Did you hear the noise? They making a noise. What is up, guys? My name is Oji. Back in the cut in this, and call us if you're ready. We're back with another video. We're back again, like we never left before. She gets, um... Where can I put you? With this? This is my... No, my diffuser? Okay. But we back with another video. As you guys can see. I think I'm gonna clean. I don't know if I'm gonna clean with you or just clean and show you the final product. But today is, I don't know. And I'm so used to it. Um, today is the 1st of March. Ah, 13 days before my birthday. Where we at? Or 13? Ah, I don't even know. Um... Am I excited? I'm really just fake excited. I'm just... Just for control. Just good, ah, just for control. But anyway, anyhow. I need to put the bags everywhere. I took all these bags that are not usual and I put them in the bed storage. But anyhow, anyhow, this. Good morning. Good morning. It's the 1st of March. Um, I didn't go to church today. I hate, I really need a time to myself. Um, and I need to also catch up on some morning school. But, but, I'm gonna first clean my room. I'm up. I just changed the setting of my bed, like the other things. And I got blue. Ah, I got blue covers today. Um, I changed my bed. Um, I realized that I need to go buy fitted sheets. Um... I need to buy fitted sheets and I need more fitted sheets. I wanna throw away the ones that I have because, um... I'm so sleepy. No, I'm lying. I'm not. The devil is a liar.
Purify. Lord, take whatever you desire. Yeah. Love is my life. I wanna be tried by fire. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Purify. Lord, take whatever you desire. Yeah. Love is mine. It's gonna burn for me to say this. Ooh, ooh, ooh. Let it burn. Let it burn. It's gonna burn for me to say this.
You know, one of the most traumatic things that I really just wanna say is that... It's like going from clear skin to a full-blown breakout. Um... And, you know, like, it, it's quite traumatic. Because it's like, yo, what do I do? What do I not do? You know what I'm saying? Because like, when you expected these, they never arrived. Because throughout high school, my teenage years, I never really had... Look at that, you know? Now I'm literally 22 and my face is breaking out like this. It's like, "Allah, biga manj." What am I gonna do? What am I, what should I do? What should I not do? Like, should I listen to these videos about the face? Because they're very irritated. Like, they're very inflamed, very irritated. Like, very painful, you know? And like, they always... I don't wanna say leaking. And then after they leak, they form crusts and, and weird things, like... What do I do to deserve this face? Like... I'ma see so lessy kati, oh, 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 oh. I'ma profit sangha so... You understand? So, like, I just wanted to say that, like, from clear skin to a breakout. Not even a little breakout where like, we can manage it. It's like literally going all over my face. Ojo tafela my cheeks. Not my chin, not cheeks. Wrong, I'm sorry. Ojo tafela my, my chin. And then my... Because I found weird... I, I woke up with a pimple on my nose on this side. I don't know if it's visible. And I'm just realizing, hmm. This looks like something that's gonna happen. Most of the ones that are so clear. And I don't know, man. But I really don't care about it like that. Cause I'm just like, I'm going through so much. I don't care about what's happening with my skin currently. You know? But like, sometimes it'd be catching me off-guard. Like, I'd be like, "Yo." Literally is how my skin looks. Like, look how my skin looks. It's crazy. Pretty hard, like... I'm also unfit, because of my breathing. I breathe like this. Jeez! And I'm late. Yonki into jekhanga, I need to fix someone. But today I had to start something. But I'm like, I'm a Gideon in this situation, you know? When Gideon wanted a sign from God and he was like, "If I ring this cloth..." "The, the, 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 the cloth must drip water, but it must not wet the ground." And then he wet again and then it's like, "Okay, this is the last time." "If I ring this thing, this cloth, let the cloth be dry, but let the, um, babies and let the ground be wet." Something along those lines. I don't know it verbatim, but I found it hilarious. So I'm going through that moment and poses with God like, "Eo." Like, "If this is actually what you want me to do." Like, I'd really appreciate it if you gave me these signs, you know? Because sometimes, like, I really... Which is so wrong, but I'm really not confident in my God-hearing, um, phase of life. Like, nah, I know sometimes like, okay, cause God's talking. Or whatever the situation may be. But like, when I think about it, like, it seems... Oof, I'm stepping into puddles. It seems like I'm lying. She gets, like... Like, why would God all of a sudden just come to you and tell you this? You know? Um, I, I think I have to kind of strengthen my relationship with God in such a way that I... Not decipher, because I can, I have deciphered, but trust. No, 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 actually. I don't know how to explain it, but like, just this... I don't wanna say lack of trust, man. Um... This song. I don't know. But all I wanna say is that lion roar. Eagles fly. Your time has come. You are meant to fly. Lion roar. Eagles fly. It's in you. I understand it. I understand, so now I have to use another door, which is behind behind. But it's in you, you are meant to fly. I am raw, eagles fly, it's in you. You are meant to fly, I am raw, eagles fly. Your time has come, you are meant to fly.
Specific direction, but as you go in this direction, things happen in your life. Oh, I'm speaking to somebody here, I'm speaking to somebody that does not have the strength to continue. Because life has ran a detour with you, but your detour is God set up, come on. Can you tell somebody that detour is God set up? Because God Almighty is a God of objectivity, God Almighty is a God of purpose and design. And God Almighty makes all things work together for the good of those that love him. Even if your mama died, listen, child of God, God will make it work out for your good. Even if they come to God, will use that very same thing that broke your heart, God.
Good morning, good morning, guys, what is up, guys, my name is Defi McGee. And guess what, I'm back in the cut and this is the Uncut Asa OG Pre微. Um, I just wanted to come here to just conclude the video, um, I just wanted to. Complete the video and kind, yeah, complete the video, um, for the weekly vlog. I'm hopefully going to post it today on Monday, and I think it's gonna be later on because, yeah, I don't have class until two. But I have to cover some stuff before I go, I wanna go to the clinic. Or rather to Discam, to the clinic at Discam and go get, um, my tests done for discovery. Because my mom, last year I didn't do it and I wanna do it now so that I don't forget like last year. And then I have a committee meeting at ten, and then, you know, yeah, whatever happens, happens. And then on top of that, um, I, 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 I don't know. My brain is a bit shut down, ah, oh yeah, I wanna also go inquire about my face, like clearly you can't really see it. It's not as bad right now, in the view of the camera, but it actually is. But anyhow, the verse of the day, um, the word for the vlog is from Hebrews ten twenty-five, if I'm not mistaken. Um, it says, um, what is it saying? Okay, it says that do not forsake the gatherings of the saints, and the reason why this is getting to me, or rather. I am in love with it currently, is because personally, I've seen the difference. That the gathering of the saints has done for me, right? Um, honestly, I've been going through so much, right? I've been going through so much in this vlog for this week, right? And I did not know how to handle so many things and I was pretty much falling apart. You know, but one thing about it that I noticed, that I also know, is that. Also the one thing that the Holy Spirit kinda like revealed to me, is like, nobody can really help you, you know what I'm saying? You just have to literally abide, you know? And, and spend time with God so that you can build dependence, and I discovered that when I was kind of venting to a friend and. And I'd be like, you know, like sometimes the friends that I have. But like, I was talking to her and she was like, but, but, Sisi, you, you always, like, you know, when somebody refers you to something that you preached about. And you're like, oh, and then I looked, I went to Luke, if I'm not mistaken, Luke twelve fifty-four. And it says, you can, you can tell, you can predict by the watwat, or the watwat, or the rain is about to rain, you can, da, 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 da. But you cannot predict the season or interpret the season or discern the season that you are in at the current time. You are a hypocrite, you are a pretender. And I was like slapped in the face and I read it yesterday, right? I was like, ugh. It's not like Jesus was not, look, okay, yeah, can I say that? It's not like Jesus was not preparing me for what I'm about to go through, because of the things that he had told me prior. Can you talk about that? Like throughout, the Lord has been teaching me so many things that would equip me for the season that I'm currently in. What do you mean? Like, some of these scriptures that I was given, which I'm not really gonna say, because it's for me. They were stepping stones or a guidance for the season that I will be currently in. And I failed to discern and I just, I allowed everything to overcome me. I allowed everything to take over, allowed everything to eat me up. And when I read Hebrews, uh, um, what's this? Is it ten twenty-five? Do not forsake the gatherings of the saints, I have seen and I can testify the goodness of that. Because they serve somewhat as also a mouthpiece for God to kind of remind you and realign you again. Because now, I, we were at the prophetic seminar, guys, I was crying the whole of. And just being in the presence of the Lord and being amongst people that worship God, it revived me. I am here and I'm here again, back with the bag, like, I don't know where I'm getting this energy. I don't know where I'm getting these things, hmm, I, I don't know either. I don't know where I am getting it, but I'm here standing with you today, or sitting on these chairs two days. And I am telling you that, do not forsake it, do not allow the enemy to tell you. Or speak through people to hurt you, for you to now leave the church, because somebody said something that offended you. You understand? Do not allow people or the enemy to take hold of that part of your life. That do not forsake the, 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 the gatherings of the saints, do not forsake worshiping with other people. Do not forsake hearing testimonies, do not forsake all of those things that come with the gatherings of the saints. Like every opportunity that you get, not every, every, be careful, discern, right? But like every opportunity that you get, do not forsake it. When, 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 when it is an opportunity that is amongst people, to be with people and share with people. Take it with both hands, take it with both hands, take it with both hands, can you guys see how publicly I am? Did you see the past few clips? I was fighting for my life, crazy, you understand? I was fighting for my life, I was like, hmm, too much, to cut the show, you know? I didn't even wanna go to prophetic seminar, I was like, hmm, don't wanna go there. But do not forsake the gatherings of the saints, do not forsake that part of life, do not forsake, like. Being in union and unity with people that are worshiping the same God, people that are in agreement with you, do not forsake it. Do not forsake it, this is the testimony. I think y'all guys, we're gonna see, or you've already seen, because this is the end of the clip, like, I was really going through it. Like, I'm going through it, I don't even care about my skin, but it's breaking out now, it's like. A bit worse, like I just, it's just that the camera doesn't allow you to see. But like, eh, do not forsake the gatherings of the saints, do not forsake, I just wanna finish my coffee then I can go. Don't forsake it, don't forsake it, don't forsake it. If you've gotten to this part of the video, can you just drop a heart? Can you just drop a heart or some stars in the comment section, so that I can see who has gotten to the end? Now I can see, you've gotten to the end, but don't forget to like, comment, share and subscribe. Don't forget to like, comment, share and subscribe and definitely, definitely comment. Comment below with a heart, with some stars, just so you know we got, yeah. But anyhow, I hope you guys have an amazing day, I hope you guys have an amazing night, depending on what time you're watching this. I'll see you on the next clip, bye.